Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar. And together with Mark Ronig, who has his website, jbiztechvalley.com, all about Jewish business in the Capitol District and also statewide news. We both have a very, very special guest with us, Carolyn McLaughlin. She's the president of the Albany Common Council. Carolyn, can I call you by your first name?
Absolutely, yeah.
Then, welcome to The Jewish View. We're very happy to have you here.
I'm happy to be here, too.
And Carolyn, for the audience, what does the president of the Albany Common Council, what's your role in that?
Well, as president of the council, we preside over all of the meetings that take place at the council. We also participate in leadership, part of a leadership council, that, a leadership team, I should say, that's made up of the president, the president pro tem, and the majority leader, which is Dan Herring's majority leader, and Richard Conti is the president pro tem. We're the ones who review any legislation that's being put forward. We meet with the administration to go over our agenda. Any information that has to be funneled down to the council comes through us. Oftentimes, when we have to submit ideas that come from the council, they go, and then we want them to go up to the administration or out to the departments, they go through the leadership team. As president, I think that it's important that, I'm a person who really, I see myself as someone who can bring all the voices together. Even though there are times you find yourself being a referee, other times you find yourself just being a voice of reason to pull people together, but I think I'm one who's there, can speak on behalf of the full city, not having an allegiance to a specific ward. Because people are elected by wards, I'm elected citywide, so I'm there as a representative of the total city of Albany.
Are you the first, no, well, first African American to be elected citywide? I know David Sores is countywide, but...
Yes. First African American to be elected president of the council. Betty Barnett was the first African American elected to the city of Albany citywide.
Oh, because she was treasurer.
When she was treasurer, yes. And I'm the third woman to be president of the council. Helen Defaces preceded me, as well as Sean Morris.
Well, then, congratulations on this. Good luck with your future with this.
Yes, I'm very happy to follow in their footsteps.
I wanted to know, you know, you mentioned Dan Herring, you mentioned Rich Conti. They vote on these, on legislation?
Yes, they do.
You don't, though, right?
The president only votes in the event of a tie.
Right, since there are 15 members of the council, rarely is there a tie.
Rarely there a tie. It can happen. I think in my 16 years there, it's happened once. But, you know, someone could be absent, and, or someone could abstain.
Right.
Those kinds of things. It can happen, but it rarely happens. Rarely does it happen.
And from what I understand, up until 1990-something, there was never a no vote on the council.
No. That's changed quite a bit. We've heard quite a bit of no's, and abstentions, and present. That's a new one for me. I've heard that more in the past few years.
Now, I think there's, proverbially speaking, I understand there's probably another role for you, in that, in your positions, that you check the pulse of the mayor every morning.
Well, I try, especially now.
Because you are next in line to be mayor if the mayor resigns. And this happened when Mayor Corning passed away midterm.
And Mayor Whelan took over.
Right, Tom Whelan took over as mayor, because he was president of the common council.
Yes, there is a provision in the charter. Should the mayor's seat become vacant for any reason, the president of the council does take that seat. And that is because you are elected citywide. So, it's like, unlike in other cities where sometimes the president is elected from amongst the members, who also are elected by a district, but as someone who's also a citywide elected official.
Well, you sort of serve like the lieutenant governor or vice president. I mean, where they break a tie.
Nice to be put in that company, yes. They have the same type of role.
And they check the pulse of their president.
If not literally, figuratively, right?
Mayor now. So, I think that, you know, you're in good company. That's how I see the president of the common council.
So, it's important, and because of that, I think it's important that the president has a really good understanding of the operations of the city, what is going on, what kind of ideas are being floated, and what kind of ideas the mayor may have. Because anything could happen. But not only because something could happen, but just in terms of moving the ideas forward. Because we're all in this business, I think, to make sure we have the best city possible that we can live in. So, the better understanding that people that have, that are in these positions, the easier it is to float those ideas, to give the constituents of the city, the residents, a better understanding. The more people that understand what's being promoted, the easier it is to get that word out to people, to the general public, and give them a better understanding of the workings of the city.
But do you consider the biggest problems, you're saying, considering the problems of Albany? Right now, what are the presidents, like your 1-2-3 list that you want to tackle and correct?
Well, right at the top is our fiscal condition of the city.
Explain what that condition is right now.
Because everything is driven by, you know, the budget. And right now, you know, we have an A bond rating. We also have a $22 million fund balance. But that, it sounds good, but right now, you think about it. We've been getting the 19A money that we've been getting from the city, that ends, from the state, that ends this year.
And what does 19A mean?
It's like payment in lieu of taxes.
Of taxes, pilot money.
The pilot money. And, as you know, in the last three or four years, Mayor Jennings has been very successful in getting a sort of a spin-up on the pilot money, and to the tune of almost $8 million a year. The governor this year put a new mechanism in place where there's a panel that you're going to have to go to, to request that type of funding in the future. So, that money is questionable going forward. So, we're talking right off the top, you know, an $8 million hole, potentially $15 million budget gap. So, what are we going to do?
Well, what was the $22 million number you talked about?
We get $14 million a year. We added, oh, the $22 million was fund balance. So, that's more like money in reserve. But if you have to use all of that up to pay for annual expenses, then that's when the creditors start looking at your rating. And there's, you want to maintain a certain balance there.
So, that's a rainy day fund?
A rainy day fund, for lack of a better term.
And what was the, what would you like to see that rainy day fund at? What level? What's the budget, total budget, you know?
Well, the budget right now is about, what is it, $160 million? But it would be good to try to maintain a budget, a fund balance of that level.
Yeah.
But...
It's more than 10%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's to make, that's comfortable. But we have contracts that are outstanding. We are looking at a landfill that's going to, has about five years left on it, I believe. And, you know, that, there's a shortfall there that we'd have to make up, because that sort of pays for itself. But at the same time, we've been getting maybe $8 to $10 million a year out of the landfill. If it closes, where's that money going to come from? Then we're talking about the $8 million that we're not going to, we, we will continue to pursue, I'm sure, the new mayor, and will pursue trying to get those funds. And I believe that it's incumbent upon the council members to solicit all the help that we can from our legislative leaders, from the Senate and the Assembly, to help us take, this is the capital city.
Right.
And, you know, there are a lot of things. We have the example of Detroit before us. We don't want to see Albany go that route. So, I think, and I know, I'm confident that our next mayor, as well as the incoming council for 2014, that we're going to work very hard to make sure that our city is, remains solvent.
Now, you mentioned we're going to be having a new mayor coming in. I know in New York City, they're going to have a new mayor coming in, and the head of the public advocate, who's the next in line in New York City, tends to run whether it was Mark Green or now Bill de Blasio. They tend to work their lives when they're public advocate around the fact they may want to be, run for mayor. Did you do that? Did you, you ran for Assembly when that was an open seat, Ron Canistrori's seat, because you live in the second ward. But did you want to be mayor? Did you have a desire for that?
Yes, I admit that.
Yeah.
And it's still not too late to have that dream of being mayor.
No, you're young.
Of Albany, so...
You've got another 20 years.
Maybe not that long, but, because I do think you have to open the door for new ideas, for younger people, and give them an opportunity to contribute to their community. But the door's not closed on that for me as well, for the future.
You see, I think you'd make a great mayor.
I do.
I read your bio, and I, for all that you've been through in your life and everything that you've, what you focused on, and you have this, this interest that's a higher level than most people who just run as a political animal. You know, you have, what, a chemistry degree?
Yes, sir.
From Kewka College. You're in human resources. And you have other talents that just develop. So, when it comes to environmental issues, you have that background being, having a degree in chemistry. You have the numbers background, being in human resources and budgeting.
Yes.
I mean, I just think this, and you've lived the hard, the hard life in the hard part of the city. So, you know, you can relate to a lot of the people on a personal level.
I mean, I think I bring a good package to a campaign for mayor. But I think we have two very good people that are running right now. And I'm hoping the best for our city.
Right.
But as I said, the door's never closed on opportunities that might come in the future.
And 22 years, you've had 22 years' experience in public office?
Including, just as a committee person, but I've been on the council. I'm concluding my 16th year. I spent three years as council member in the second ward, which is in the south end of Albany, in the last four years as president. And I'm running unopposed in the primary for president, for reelection as president. I do have an opponent in the general election on the conservative line.
Which doesn't get people very far in the city.
But I, you know, you take nothing for granted.
No, that's true.
But I do look forward to the opportunity to serve for another four years.
Yeah. What points do you want to bring out that let people know about you that might be, like, I brought up some topics of your background. What do you want people to know about that they don't really know about Carolyn McLaughlin?
Well, I mean, I'm a native of Albany, and as such, and I take a great deal of pride in the fact that I have the opportunity to serve as president of the common council.
What surprises would you, what would people be surprised about?
Well, I think the surprise that I have a degree in chemistry, and I worked in that field for about 12 years. So, I used my degree once I got out of college, and then went on to get my master's degree in public administration, after being out of college for almost 20 years. Then I went and got my master's degree. I think, when you look at the experience that I had, I don't know whether people know that I, I worked in the Division of Budget for 10 years, 10, 11 years. And I think that that is the best experience. I call the Division of Budget the university of the state budget. Because you can go in there and you learn how government works, not only on a state level, but on a local level, so...
You also learn how it doesn't work, so you don't repeat those same...
Exactly. But New York State government is modeled for around the country, whether, the good, the bad, and the indifferent, you know? But, but when I went to graduate school, this is what we used. The New York State budget was a textbook for the budgeting class. So, I think, with all the challenges that we have to meet here in New York State, I think it is the perfect window from which to watch and to participate in government.
Now, the Bethlehem Town Supervisor, John Clarkson, spent many years in the Division of Budget. Did you work with him?
No, I don't, I don't remember.
You don't remember? Because, and then he's turning around Bethlehem, doing new things in Bethlehem.
You learned, I mean, you know, how to, how to talk about finances, how to make sure that people understand, when you say no, what it means. It's not just for the sake of saying no. And when people provide you with justification for something that they want, that has to be clear. And I think if more people understood, the residents, understood that whole budget process, even a little bit of it, they would be more apt to go and knock on their legislators' doors, and the leaders' doors, to explain what we need for our community, and you need to try to help us as much as you can. When you asked me earlier about the issues that I feel are important, I said that, I meant, because I do think, number one, is the fiscal health of our city, but also the education of our children. And that's tied also into the state budget and the funding that we provide for that, and for, and as it trickles down to our community schools. Because if we're not preparing our young people for the future, to be the future leaders, then the country, the wealth and welfare of the country is at stake. And when you're talking about less than 50% of our students graduating from high school, and then when you talk about over 90% of those are students of color, that's a real concern for me. And when we looked at the scores that just came out of, from the Common Core curriculum, from grades three through eight, as it dealt with math and science and reading.
Disco.
I mean, 30% proficiency from grades three through eight throughout the state. And I've been in a room where we've been talking about the Common Core, don't be alarmed if the numbers are low. How can you not be alarmed when you see that?
And we had the mayor, who was an assistant principal, and he didn't focus his 20 years on getting 50% of Albany High School graduated.
See, but the thing is, you also have to understand, I don't, I don't put that on his lap. I don't put, I don't throw that blame in his lap. There's a, there's a relationship between the school district and the city of Albany that was...
Dysfunctional.
Dysfunctional for many years. And right now, I mean, that's water under the bridge, but we really have to focus, look forward. And I'm so excited about the Albany Promise Initiative that Chancellor Nancy Zimfer has initiated with SUNY and the community of Albany. And I think that that's going to work very well for us. But it's, I mean, it requires the business community, the nonprofit community, government at all levels, you know, working together to make sure that our students are prepared to go to school and prepare to be successful from pre-K through college. And, but it's, it's, it's an effort that requires all of us to be around the table.
Do you find that there's a changing attitude in the city of Albany among elected officials, where there's the political stalwarts on one side, and then the progressives who are just coming into the system recently, and haven't been part of that machine operation, or aligned with anyone in particular? Do you see factions, as you're sitting up there on the dais, on the rostrum, do you see these factions parting the seas in the common council?
Well, not so much in the council, but I think across the city, you do have different groups that have formed.
Oh, yeah. We're a diverse city, for sure.
But I also want to, you know, I read something years ago that said, "The oppressed soon become the oppressor." So, I don't want to see just changing seats, where, and where a new person or a new segment of people come in and perpetuate the same type of behavior that they complained about.
There was a Jewish councilman, Harold Greenstein. And when he passed away recently, it was written up in his obituary that he recalled Mayor Corning called him up and said, "Harold, I want you to be on the common council. If I say it so, it'll be so." He was like Moses, you know?
Well, I think those days are gone.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, there's that, that doesn't happen anymore.
No, because I believe that the people...
But do people still get angry? There are these ward leaders and these party people who circulate petitions on behalf of the party, that when someone primaries, that they go, "Ooh, look at that, he's going against..."
Well, I think what is, because it happened to me. But I think what you find is, I think there's a group, the group of council members that are, currently are sitting, and those that are running, I think that they're, they are independent voices. We all, in order to get things done, you do have to align yourself with people. Because I may need your support. I am going to need, I need eight votes to pass something.
Right.
You know, so there's, then there's nothing wrong with that. But I think that there's no set group that's going to be in place, that if you know if they're voting this way, that that legislation is going to move. There was a time when you could count on, you knew that there were going to be eight people going this way, no matter, and however it was dictated that it should go.
And is that, is that the same now, or...
No, I, it's not as clear. If I would say, there's probably three groups now, not two.
Okay, what are the three that you see?
Well, I mean, there are folks who, the environmentalists, if I had to categorize, folks, I would say. And, and a lot of people want to call themselves progressives, but, you know, and I think some people use the term loosely. Because, you know, progressive politics is inclusive politics. And even like some people that I look at, and I look out and I see them calling themselves progressives, I don't necessarily view them that way. Because everybody is not included in decisions that are being contemplated. So, you got your progressives, you have the ones that are more conservative, and conservative in that they are more tied to the old democratic machine. And that number is dwindling.
Sure they are, they're dying off.
That number is dwindling. And then you have people who are new to this whole business of politics, and...
The upstarts.
Yeah, and they're not, upstarts, and not really, really quite sure where they want to align themselves. You know, progressives is the term of the day. Because you aren't supposed to be talking about the working poor, the poor, people of color, women, and just being in the LGBT community.
Yes.
So, so everybody wants to say that they're aligned with everything.
Do you agree with what David Patterson said a couple of weeks ago, where he said he was supporting Scott Stringer for public, for city controller, and not Elliot Spitzer, who was lieutenant governor? He says, "Just because I'm supporting Scott Stringer doesn't mean I hate Elliot Spitzer. I mean, they're both wonderful people. I just chose to support Scott Stringer and not Elliot Spitzer. I offered my endorsement to Scott Stringer early on in January. Elliot came along later. But that doesn't mean he's a bad man. Just because I'm supporting one person doesn't mean the other person's evil." I mean, that doesn't happen in Albany, though.
See, but I, I agree with that, because you have different relationships with people over the years. There are many instances right now where there are council members that I have worked with, but I also know that there are people that are running, that I, that I like a great deal. And, but they've decided to step up. So, rather than get in that battle, I just stay out of it. There are others that I feel very strongly about. And I feel that it is important to, to support individuals publicly. But as a president of the council, I have to work, and I will be, I'm going to be it. I am the president. So, and I will, I believe that I will be the president for 2014 term. But, so I have to work with whoever comes into office, the citywide offices, I'm going to have to work with the mayor, the treasurer, and the auditor. And those council members that are going to be sitting around those 15 seats, whoever gets elected, I'm going to have to work with them. And I really don't want there to be this, that relationship to be tainted, because, you know, I supported this one or that one. So, I think it's important that, and once the election is over, the clocks start ticking all over again. Because it's not, it can't be about what happened yesterday.
No, there's a time for politics and a time for governance.
Exactly.
Prose and poetry, as Mario Cuomo once said.
Yes, and, because we're going to have at least, I know we're going to have four new people, because four people...
Are retiring.
Are retiring from the council. And there could be at least two others.
Now, how do you take your position as ward leader? You're still ward leader, yeah, in the second ward. And what you just said about needing to stay out of a race, but now there's a primary in the second ward, but how do you not take a side as a political leader, and now you had your government leader position hat on? Now, how do you take, you know, how do you reconcile that with your political...
Well, that is two roles. And in that regard, I went to the committee people in the ward.
Yeah.
And I did have a strong opinion on that race. I do, I should say. And, but I tried to, tried my very best to leave that up to the committee people.
Okay.
And let them make that choice. And that's what they did.
What Shelley Silver does with the Assembly Conference. He says, when I ask him an opinion about something, he goes, "I don't know, I got to check on my conference." So, the committee men are pretty much your conference.
Yes, and in that, in that regard, I did feel it was important for them to weigh in. Now, do I say I don't have any influence? No, I wouldn't go that far, but, I mean, I let my opinion be known, and people could see that. I mean, it's politics.
Yeah.
You know, and if you can't play the game, don't, don't get on board. Because, I mean, I had to learn that. I mean, there, like you said, there's politics, and then there's governing. And the whole idea of campaigning, that's the political game. And, you know, you got to learn how to move those chips around the board.
And have thick skin.
Absolutely.
You got to have thick skin. And I know there's so many thin-skinned people on that council, it's like...
I mean, I've run, this is my sixth race that I've had, and I've had an opponent five times. So, I've had to work. Nobody gave it to me.
Right.
I've had to work so, to get it. And I believe if you want it hard enough, and if you feel that strongly about it, you will go out there and do the work. Not only during campaign season, but do the work during the term.
Oh, yeah.
So that people, there's no question. I don't care, you could put 10 people up against you, people are going to, you're it, because they know that you have stood your ground.
Well, that's why Paul Tonko is so popular, and because he gets out there, he's at every meeting. You call him up, and he's never seen a camera he didn't like, you know, and...
Yeah, I mean, even before he became congressman.
I'm saying, even in the Assembly, yeah.
He was, and not only in his district.
No.
That's how I became to know him, because he wasn't my representative when he was in the Assembly. But that's how I got to know him, was when he was an assemblyman. And, you know, and so it was easy, you know, to support him when he ran, because he made himself known to people.
Yep.
And if the people in the community don't know you, then you never want your neighbors or your constituents to say, "Well, I've never seen her or him."
Well, let me ask you...
You have to be out there.
There's a guy, Dr. Jackson, who's on the Board of Regents. He lives on Lenox Avenue in Albany. Do you, have you met him? Have you met Dr. Jackson? Has he come to you and said, "I want to make myself known to you"? Because, I'll tell you, I went around to the Assembly members in this judicial district, because that's how the Regents are chosen, by judicial, and they're like, the freshman members are saying, "This guy's never come around to see me and introduce himself to me."
I can't say that.
You have, so this is the Albany representative, the representative for this area on the Board of Regents.
I'm trying to think, he lives on Lenox Avenue?
Yeah.
I'm trying to think, yes, I have met him.
Dr. Jackson.
Because I believe that he has been at the, yes, he has. He, I have met him. But I've met him at Albany Promise meetings.
Okay.
But I'm happy to say that, and in that role, being a participant on, in Albany Promise, that lets us, he brings a great deal of expertise to the table, to the conversation. And I think, lets people know that from the highest level, people are concerned about the education of our children.
Okay, so you're on board with him. Okay, good. Anything else you want to mention?
Excuse me.
You know, just, is there bigger, grander plans for Albany? I mean, sometimes they say the waterfront, I mean, maybe it's a little bit too highfalutin, a little bit, you know, like you're getting more of the brass tacks, that's what you're talking about, is probably the best thing. You know, the budget, and maybe crime, and you sing education. But, you know, let's say, you know, there was that Greyhound bus terminal to make, you know, Albany a real center city, to focus in, like a bigger, you know, grander plans of the city.
I think, I'm gonna have a problem coffee, but the air is getting a little dry in here for me. But the downtown, Albany, the downtown bid is really a very important organization as it relates to development of downtown of Albany. And I think that there are a number of ideas that are brewing, a number of people there, and along with the new administration, I think, they really want to see some new things happen downtown. And that has always got to be a priority for a city like this, for your, for your state capital.
What they did in Albany Med is like knocked down some of the buildings, you know, that looks, you know, like first-class now, you know, I mean, just-
I mean, I don't know if we're gonna do mass demolition downtown, but I know that there's some ideas brewing. Excuse me, as it relates to the waterfront, we have to continue to look at that as one of our biggest, greatest resources. It's right there on the waterfront, and-
Do you support an aquarium? Do you support it?
I do think that that is an idea that we can pursue, and we should pursue, because it is indeed an opportunity for-
You want some water?
For people to-
Okay.
There's an idea, it's something that we, that we don't have here in the city of Albany. We need to look, we need to be creative about what we want to bring town, downtown. Not only to attract residents from outside to come visit our city, but for an opportunity for our young people and residents alike.
So the aquarium's a good idea.
I, I think it is.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm happy to see that Omni is going to finance a study-
Right.
To see if that's something that's feasible for our city.
Yeah, could it be, and naming rights for the aquarium, you know, we can get some money for that and-
Absolutely. Times, what is it now, the Times Union Center? Because, you know, its name has changed so often.
I know, well, every ten years.
Yeah, so, and I think there's still opportunities. Now we're looking at, you've got the Marriott Renaissance, they're gonna do a hotel up on Eagle.
Right.
I mean, with, and I think, once you have things like that happening, they just drive other things.
Yeah, other things. You know, Ms. McLaughlin, we're actually out of time, and it was very, very informative. It's all right, you're a good speaker, you do well. And you were very informative, and we give you our wishes that you should carry on in more years of being with health and being productive as you've been, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
All right, it's great to have you.
Thank you.